Thank you. 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 My name is Nolita Ndomogwana, the chairperson of the Portfolio Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure. I am deployed in the National Assembly by the African National Congress. I'm coming from the province of Legends, the eastern Cape.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Now going to allow the members of the portfolio committee to introduce themselves.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Samantha Graham-Marey. I am a member of the Democratic Alliance and I serve on the portfolio committee for public works and infrastructure. I bring you greetings from a town called Krafrenet in the eastern Cape. And I'd just like to take this opportunity to say thank you very, very much to everybody. It's a very cold, very miserable morning, but you've taken the time out of your day to come and share with us. So thank you so much. We look forward to hearing from you. Good morning, everybody. My name is Madeleine Hicklin and I too am from the Democratic Alliance. Good morning, everybody. My name is Madeleine Hicklin and I too am from the Democratic Alliance. I hail from Midrand in Gauteng and I enjoy being part of this portfolio committee of the Department of Public Works and Infrastructure. Thank you so much for coming out to join us in Bethlehem today. We really do appreciate your input and we look forward to the comments that you are going to make on Bill 23 of 2020. Thank you so much. My name is Wayne Thring. I represent the African Christian Democratic Party. I come from a town just outside of Durban called Pintown in KwaZulu-Natal and sit on the committee of public works and infrastructure. And certainly this morning, I'm looking forward to hearing your inputs and we trust that they will be insightful on this important bill of expropriation without compensation. Looking forward, as I said earlier, to your inputs and may the Lord bless you. Thank you.
Hey, Kamalam, I'm Tim Marchele. A member of this portfolio committee from Bumalanga in Bushback Ridge, deployed by the African National Congress in the National Assembly. I am happy to be part of this assembly which will shape the direction of our country. Thank you very much.
I'm Sharon Van Sculpvik, a member of the African National Congress, deployed to the National Assembly, also a member of this portfolio committee of public works and infrastructure. And I'm from Uppington in the northern Cape. And it's good to be here today and we value all your inputs. Thank you very much. My name is Elfas Mathebula. I'm a member of parliament. As a member of parliament, I have been deployed by the only people's organization, the African National Congress. I'm also serving in this important portfolio committee. I come from an area called Kwasamoguse in Bumalanga under Steve Shetland, local municipality. And I wish to also join my colleagues in saying that one appreciate the fact that you braved the cold to come and attend this very important meeting. And we are looking forward to benefiting from one another. And I thank you. We are joined today by the councillors from the local municipality. The names that I have are all DA councillors. Councillor Eric Motowung. There are any councillors, traditional leaders from other political parties, please bring your names to us. You are all welcome. Leaders of the political parties, leaders of the religious fraternity, leaders of the civic organization, leaders of organized labor, leaders of farmers, leaders of community forums, and everyone who is here, greetings. We are the portfolio committee of public works and infrastructure from the National Assembly. We are the portfolio committee of public works and infrastructure from the National Assembly. Here to seek your views and comments on the expropriation bill number 23 of 2020. A bill which seeks to repeal Expropriation Act Number 63 of 1975, which is the one currently used for expropriating properties. As you can hear from the year that I'm mentioning, it's an act that was made by the previous government, the apartheid government. Which is definitely not in line with the constitution that we adopted as a country in 1996. So we're bringing to you the expropriation bill which will be in line with the constitution that we're using as the country. A bill that outlines processes and procedures of how expropriating authorities expropriate properties for public use and public interest. And in cases where it is necessary, it gives the organs of state to expropriate property without compensation. This is a very important bill. We will then allow you to raise your views on this important bill. You only have three minutes to do so. You are free to express yourself in any of the 11 official languages. Please express the views of your political party, your community forum, without fear or favor. You will take all your views. Before I point to those that are going to speak. Let me acknowledge the presence of Archbishop Khadebe, who is leading the Boshokong Council of Churches. Can you please raise your hands, those that would like to speak? Number one, number two, number three at the back. I'm starting on this side. Any other hand on this side, number four. And then on this side. Okay, Dante will remain there, they will bring the mic to you. Number six, yeah, when I'm final, come to the side. Number seven, number eight, number nine, number 10. And Dante, I think will be the last one in this round. And Dante Muruti. I pointed at you. Archbishop will be the last one. And I would, no, we will come to the second round. I would also appeal that we start. Yes, we start with Dante and then please give him the roving mind. And those that are capturing, can they also please go and... Let's also acknowledge councillor Hilton Mastorp, who is also a DA councillor.
Good morning. Am I audible enough? Thank you, I'm Hilton Mastorp, resident in De La Ben. Thank you for this opportunity and a big warm-hearted welcome to the committee and also rest of Bethlehem. An Afrikaans say ons bae ba welkom, ons vertrouwd achela werk ons insetting of ndaxalwardeer. My point of departure will be as follows. A high-level report under the chairmanship of former president Khalil Mal Mekante indicated that constraints to land reform since 1994 are due to increasing evidence of corruption by officials. The division of the land reform budget to elites, lack of political will, lack of training, and the lack of law and capacity have proved more serious stumbling blocks to land reform. Near it, nearer to us, Bethlehem, we have a failed apple project of 110 square meters that has failed due to political stumbling and lot of issues. The Gupta Link Free Dairy Product in the Free State are quite examples. I've only mentioning two whereby the list can goes on and on and on. My question this morning, what happened to that report? Has this, has this committee ever took a look at inputs of the chairperson, the former president Khalil Mal Mekante? Second to that, although we all asked these questions, but we need to reiterate it again. What would the financial implications be in South Africa currently without the economy that is failing us big time? Second to that, the question is the financial burden and implication that it might have on private owners. And has this committee up to now, have you got any financial data that you could inform us that we can make a decision irrespective of the political endeavors? That we can make a wise decisions in terms of the way forward? And then my last point is, what happened? What happened to the stuff that we have submitted about three years ago? I will end with a following. I do not support this expiration bill, not at all.
Chair, just the Afrikaans portion was welcome and we trust that you'll appreciate our inputs here today.
My name is Jafta Mukwena. I sit as being said earlier, I'm a councillor of DA. I stand to oppose this bill that has been brought before us because it's going to disadvantage landowners. There is no way that people who own their land, their land can be taken without compensation. People who, it is better that people who own houses be given title deeds, not to be given land that has been taken from other people. I do agree that previously it was cruel for people to be dispossessed of their land. However, this is cannot be corrected in this way. We cannot correct what is wrong by doing something wrong as well. So I suggest that people should be given title deeds as this will also attract investment. Thank you.
Dear councillor Eric Motowung from the DA, I'm a caucus leader. The DA fundamentally disagrees with the position to expropriate land without compensation because no constitutional amendment is necessary for sustained, substantive land reform. This would take away value and ownership for most Africans. Amending section 25 of the constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation will not address the systematic challenges currently facing the land reform process in South Africa. What is needed is a pragmatic and rational approach that will operate within the confines of the current constitutional provision on land reform. Case in point, my honorable councillors did allude to the fact that the land reform process continues to fail due to lack of political will to deal with rampant corruption and lack of continuous training and support. That has left amazing black farmers to fend for themselves. The Free State is littered with sad cases of people who indicated that while they were victims of the past discriminatory laws, they are now victims of the current corruption similar to the 80 beneficiaries of the Free Dairy Farm. Land reform projects driven by the DA-led government have a success rate of 80%, sorry, 60%, while the current government's success rate is a mere 10%. This basically shows you that we don't need to amend the constitution. All we need is political will and accountability. Therefore, I stand to oppose this bill.
Good morning, panelists. It's a privilege to be here today. I'm Hanaleen Mostert. I'm representing the ACDP. Our stance is that we do not agree with the expropriation without compensation. Reason being is that there has been a lot of failure on the part that did accept the land that they got. If I remember correctly, it's about 7%, but over 90% of the people that accepted or that was granted the land chose to get the cash instead. So what has happened to those land that was expropriated, functioning, productive land that is now laying astray? I would suggest rather use that land and get that farms back up and running and productive to create jobs for so many that need it. In our own district, there are people that poverty and unemployment is rife. It's extremely important to get people back into the labor market to increase and to better our economies in our country and especially in this loving.
Thank you. Chair, there's no time for greeting, as you may appreciate. This bill is against the rights of people because for those who have land for now and don't give them compensation, it also tells those who want to invest in land that they won't be compensated for their investment in land. So I therefore oppose this bill. Thank you so much. My name is Luketa Mbele and I'm the chair of this, or here in Bethlehem, for Arts and Culture Youth Forum. So I stand here on behalf of the youth. I'd like the youth to participate in this land issue and also like to ask that you give land to the youth because as youth we struggle and we are poor. And we'd like the land also to do, to do things like theatre and other arts activities. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Isolde Laisaken. I'm standing here today for the Bethlehem Business Forum, Deglibing Action Forum, Bethlehem Community Forum. Myself as a property owner and as well as an independent candidate for the upcoming local elections. We are against the bill as it stands in its entirety, simple as that. We can go on by telling you about land reform and property ownership dropping in uh value etcetera. But because we've got only a few minutes, I'm going to tell you about the following. The myth that land alone can be, uh, make people wealthy should be placed in perspective. South Africa covers a hundred and twenty-two million hectares of land in total and has around sixty million citizens. If this land, most of it semi-desert environment, suitable for agriculture only, was to be allocated to every citizen, each person would receive only two hectares. An area too small to produce sufficient food to survive. Roughly, we talk about here sixty-eight percent of South Africans inhabitants are urbanized and are reliant on commercial farmers for food security. Meaningful land reform together with the reversal of land ownership patterns is an imperative for this country. We are however still of the respectful opinion that amending the constitution to give effect to this is unnecessary. We must ensure that going forward, expropriation at below market value or even at nil compensation does not negatively impact on local and international national inventor- investors' confidence or increase the plague of poor either because of job losses, poor economic growth, or more importantly, increased level of food insecurity caused by the collapse of food production. If this were to happen, we would all suffer and mostly the poor whom we are hoping will benefit from considered land reform programs. I thank you.
Good morning. I am Hendrick Knobel and I'm speaking on behalf of the farmers who are members of Free State Agriculture in the Thabo Mufotsoniana district. And we reject the appropriation bill in its current format for the following reasons. Firstly, we reject all reference to circumstances where compensation could be nil or even below market value. Therefore, we reject section twelve-three and twelve-four and any other reference to the possibility of nil compensation. Secondly, we strongly believe that opening the gap for expropriation for land reform at nil compensation will cause a total collapse in the SA economy. Because it will destroy investor confidence and will not be in the best public interest. It will also not be in the interest of current and future black landowners and of farmworkers. Thirdly, market value as the basis of compensation, as explicitly stated in the constitution, is non-negotiable. Fourthly, the definition of public interest in the bill is far too broad and will provide opportunities for misuse of power by government officials. Fifthly, as much as as much as just and equitable land reforms is needed in South Africa, doing so by means of expropriation with nil compensation is by no means the best way to achieve land reform. And it's not in the best public interest. Expansion of private property rights must be pursued and not the accumulation of land by the state. Lastly, access to courts is non-negotiable. However, the bill does not support the financial burden of the landowner to access the courts if the already expropriated landowner doesn't feel they receive just and equitable compensation. In summary, food security will be under big pressure. There will be more corruption by the government. There may be more job losses in the agrisector. And let's not forget all the animals that died of hunger when highly productive farms were previously transferred, transferred to previously disadvantaged people. We therefore reject the bill in its current format. Thank you very much.
Dumele, na kale vitoke Janma Kubo, Larens. Eh, kiwona hapoya alefazi ntle riklabiso. Itla ba teli hantla holo, banen ngichulwalu. Renale ba twabanga atavati yidoma plasi, basa fua next. Wonxunolu bontatemolu bava mbarona. Baholete mo no bava ba patelo mo. Impa today yau kena a new owner. Ki ona eri moveamba twano batel keshini. Ena atal keshini mona, hafumanesaiti ebonsangor. Ke saiti yabudulu ye. Ke saiti nyana fele awrapili mo. Yeu mu kiena ya hori eh rinke mobu. Ri rutiba twasu barona orna, tiala mobu iguka. Oska atwa lamaloe izi fele mulem. Isega karkari baba suwa na le mulemo hori eh mobu sebeza ye. Le rona ba twasu, renale ona tite tene hori. Re tchola maplasia man. Awon tata rona le wonxunawa rona, nabasebeza mo. Le maplasia apota putiling dibakazaru. Ashoka ala rea kema plasiya, aye tese budulo ba batu. Hawo usheba usheba karo mutuaru. Kimatwa manganga kene mona kahare ho la palilili six or five. Ta ba twa budu mo. Leu mu kiena ya komunisheteng karo mutuaru na. Odofana komunishireting maspala oto ofana kachale. Impa oska tewa nachale teting sebeza ye, sebeza ka. Eh, hau na tete tungu karo holo fazi la komunish. Unguwa fele hooska ba tabila ban ba buutu akapo. Wakutuwa hori, haku tobi sana oru, nganha hektarazika na. Yeu mu nguwa fele. Hona leu mu se nguwe mole, utlarense mole. Unguwe hektaraste tete. Di fualohale tete because of a car eh ho la balim. Le media surishi abala riklabisa lohale. Ya be lo roto tapatalaka hafiye ne hektarazin kapahektarazin se kalote. So lo so na tina kalo kala, oke ri nke. Ibeza rona kala ba twas. Ditanya na taruna kete niyana tabudulu. Adile kani tisata tropo. Le rona recherenlefazi kawaleka. Ntlelelefazi, hau no bo na di eh ditulwana ta democracy. Democracy ayebenuruna kaofe. Obani kaofela tchoka alafazi, tchoka karo sebedisa. Mulemonwa rona, lemonwa lume tete lang malukonata. Eh, the last one kiena ya hori. Odofana alafazi tete, hau na meru kwanor kabilda. Tete kiri eh sports centers arona. Le di tor centers arona. Le di goloting eh. Le 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 makararenrenale, tenu tenu kiti township eh town center in township. Odofana arnatohne. Impa kamo laka harika ruhubezo, mruo banga ta hori kibaba halaudi. Hanaleka tete kana tene riklabisa dibobubeh. Hori, tene tadinhto, tisa maya bubeh. Kia lebo ba tabila. Mo xomali tili, tata kwanor mameh. Di plasiya nguwa, hadi twela nguwa kibabatwa lang, ho le tchube kieka po. Cape Town. Odofana asati binnexte historya plasiya, mara iliana inkile. Peoples' vote la mona banale de historya plasiya. Banale tete a kala bo na ba tola hafiye mobu. Isemu thafita mona uje de plasiya, naki akofita ma. Muhole tchaba ye na. So lo narana lecher alefazi. Ra lu kero, cherenyala fazi mole, retwale ityanya ye. Kia lebo.
Greetings. My name is Janma Kubo and I'm from Clarence. I agree with this expropriation without compensation. I think it's good. Because some of our grandparents and grand-grandparents have grew up in those farms, buried in those farms. And we have no access to, we have no access to them. And some of them, they are sent to township. And when they come to the township, they are just given just a small site. Also, we need to teach black people how to utilize the land. Not that it's only the whites who know how to utilize that land. We also need to take the surrounding farms so that we can maintain them. Because you may find that some of the farms, it's lived only five or six families in just one farm. Municipals, on the other, on the other hand, they take money and do nothing. They're our leaders, they're giving money and no one asks them what happened to their money. And without benefit to the publics. Certain sectors here in Clarence eh had eh had sewage problems. But no one was accounted for for that problem. We need to share this land equally so that democracy can be for everyone and for all the generation, not only for one side. Because of, if we have land, we'll have things like sports centers and also build tour eh tour houses, schools. And we also have things like town center eh courtship that we can also build. And then lastly, I'd like to say, we must stop this thing of a person from Cape Town to come and take our land or as someone from Jobek to come take their land here who has no idea of the history of here. So I say we must all share equally. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mark Demins. I represent Afri Forum. We are standing against this expropriation without compensation. The basic rights of property ownership are what is the fundamental foundation of this country. And it will affect all members of the public. Anybody who owns any form of property and, by the way, I understand this bill will not be restricted to agricultural land, but it could be businesses as well as private residents. That will affect all of us. And I know that those who have paid for their way honestly by making the profit of payments every month for their properties, there's no way that has been justified that their lands can be taken away. There is enough state land to be able to share amongst the people that need land. But make sure that it is shared with knowledge that the people taking ownership of that land has the knowledge and ability to be productive and not just another drain on this country. So therefore, I stand against this expropriation without compensation. Thank you.
I greet you all in the wonderful name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, amen. That's me. Yes. I give you a fell among the lebo who fumana sabakasela. Butukon Council of Churches support expropriation bill terms of section twenty-five of the constitution of South Africa. We need the land for church sites because we used to worship in our houses before COVID nineteen and during COVID nineteen. Now it's no more safe to worship in our houses because of COVID nineteen. And we don't have a place to worship. We are planning to build the Shabem Pastoral Care Centre in our Black Township, Butuko, where we can have shelter for victims of gender-based violence. But we don't have a site and land. The community of the Shabem will benefit from counselling for formal debriefing counselling, trauma counselling, aftercare counselling, bereavement counselling, marriage counselling, and worship and workshop to prevent gender-based violence once we have a place or a land. We have centers only in white area and birthland. But where the queer people stay, there is none, especially in Butuko. That's none, that's center. Let the government consider to give churches. And let these people their land they deserve. As per chapter seven, clause eh clause twenty-two of the constitution, it gently so that you can avoid disaster of spreading COVID nineteen in small, small places or houses. Allow me to, hangi na mona kiti fitemoni haki. Spiritual crime prevention against gender-based violence, corruption is the idea to support government, officers and officials, churches, business community, community leaders and members to be the best they can. And it's fight against sin, crime and corruption. We live in in a tragic world, into broken world. Hurt and pain characterize our lives. Some are wounded by parents or betrayed by friends. Others felt the anger and fear that accompanies trauma. This is the world with violence, bloodshed, poverty and human suffering. Every day, someone is robbed somewhere, unemployed. And drugs is increasing more and more. People are becoming desperately unaware of crime and corruption that is sweeping over our township, suburbs and rural areas. May the Lord bless you keta bilo, amen.
Amen. We will take another round of hands. Number one, yes. Number two. Number three. Um, if you have raised your hand, please come to the room. If your hand is up, please join the room.
Eh, ki dumedi se um du las tulo. Le mahotla ose eh atengwa. Le parlamentiere chaki tengwa. Kela lo soba. Ri dumelanale mula wana ona. Eh, lefazi. Olvitola kagen tlatatwa. Lefazi obshoko balu kutelele oba twaboro. Lefazi kimruo gorona. Lefazi, leta kona utusa oba. Obina le me sebezi. Lefazi halili tene. Leta kona hape hori eh bo rache bo baba nyani. Ba difama si le baba mbayi lo ngore. Ba shoka tese. Ya osabeza lefazi ba bina letebo. Somla wana ona ra ochayela eh ibile ra otsieza. Kina ko ya hori lefazi lehutli. Ra seba na ko ngefiti len lili la nguwa lefazi lela rona le. Kama ha hapa. Juali obshoko oba hajali lehutele batu mbaborona. Juali, roko pafela Parlamentia South Africa. Ikayete kapili ihuti selfazi oba twaboro na. Me lefazi libe umuso lehutele batu. Batu banze bankaka rolo di puisano tene eh kamona. Ke ba ilongo re hajali ufumanorri. Lefazi nese tsebalinkile me bata obali bele bo na fele. Lefazi etamile libe bo ngatim ba twaboro na ba ba. Somla wana ra ochayela munoana. Halifazi lehutele batu. Kina ko ya tene hajali. Kia lebo.
My name is Intlanzat Klaba. I support this bill because I have a strong feeling that land should be returned to to the rightful owners. And it will be advantageous for black people to have land as it's going to create jobs. Small business owners will also benefit from having land. Let the land return to the owner. There are some people here who oppose this bill. There are some people here who oppose this bill because already they own land. So as black people, we also need our land back. Now is the time.
Eh, kialiboa, ibile kialidumedi sa. Kilebo ya laputembalo na kwano, osoa Parlamentia ota kwano Ronaldu kudwajo. Nakali wizokitise somukwena, ke soa honabushuku muna, hantle kinyulua diplasingwa na. Taba kakiye na, eh, Mdu拉斯Tulu. Eh, nakitsiyeta this bill, ya itsiyeta horonava thwaba thwazibu ufmana le fazi. Ho han, nakilichena le baba kaharekamonarana leto. Eh, Mdu拉斯Tulu, two percent de fela ya batu kaha roo South Africa. Ki oana eswehrenle fazi, ninety-eight percent de lenroona haranalo ona le fazi. So, tavae nenteybuera, eh, Mdu拉斯Tulu ya ori, eh, economy, le unemployment. Hasen nedi, ibanreka fumana le fazi. Fifty percent ya roona eka fumana le fazi. Economy, le unemployment eta basiko, eh, Mdu拉斯Tulu. Obani zena diyeta alakawo, two percent de fela ki oana ehiri le ninety-eight percent. Percent de nyaneha hole Mdu拉斯Tulu. Ninety-eight inga tena reduzi fela haranala fazi mpatu percent de nalol. Hanajale, eh, Mdu拉斯Tulu, bo ngata ba, batu banaba oona ma plasi. Ke batwa overseas. Motu duzi England, duzi Australia ona le plasi mo. Eh, na hanaplasilo ona le fourteen farms. Ona le fifteen farms, ke motwale mo. Harika dileberu no roona haruho ne ho oona ma plasi. MPa ilohore de foreign people ba hona oru batle muna batwa rekadi plasi because banali chellet. Le batu ba nbarikse ma plasiya, nwa ba nbarikse ta ona. Obani bashebile chelitina, batse ba ore nakina ya ona chelitina otarreka le fazi le. Le fazi lena galebata, eh, Mdu拉斯Tulu. Galebata le fazi lena, muso otar ruuta, otar kenya di kolo hori reho ne ho projusa. Mo nu le fazi le. Retale maholo ona, reta projusas kaboa. Na hava nteba projusajwalu. At least fifty percent ya hona ho projusa, isn't two percent. Because ba esakabomo, barilele kahanajale ma plasi. Howka ya most of the farms batu banzuwa. Barilele kuha, hama tuwana ba filha ba. Hori fela itlebe bo na fela. Ba hona ho projusa. Itler hababuwa ba rkeru na fela reprojusan. Ibanreka zamaya, le toshua ketala, denretamea resu. Galebata le fazi lena, kewata ibela roona. Obani le fazi lena loanaki la roona. So kitsiyeta this bill, Mdu拉斯Tulu, ori etu elepili, galebata le fazi lena kialibo.
Thank you, and I greet you all. And thank you to take your time from the parliament to be with us. My name is Tisse Tomukwena, and I'm from the farms in Bushuku. Chair, I agree with this bill. Black people need to get land. We don't have nothing. Chair, you see, two percent in South Africa, they're the ones who have land. Whereas ninety-eight percent have nothing. This notion that economy and unemployment is because of this, it's not true. You see, if fifty percent of people have their land, then we don't, we'll have a good economy and we won't have unemployment. But this thing that the two percent is hiring the ninety percent is not right. Chair, most of the landowners, they live in overseas. Some of them, they are England, some of them, they are in Australia. And you find out they have fourteen or fifteen farms, but they are in, but they are overseas. Just because they are foreigners and have money, they can buy anything they want. And also those who sell them, who sell their land, they also are willing to sell them because they have money and we don't have nothing because of, we didn't have land. Government will help us to plow and to produce. This thing that these people, that two percent are saying that if they are not here, this land won't produce, it's not true. Government will help us and will educate us and will also can produce. So, right now, we are being chased in our farms and in our land. And they are telling us they are the only ones who can produce, which is not true. So, I agree with this bill and we want this land. This is our land.
Eh, hakilebua esbaka, eh, mtsama eswari puisa no. Eh, ke ema mona, ke le eh, Community Development Work, kwanamona eh, dikhabe. Ga ramtwa Bushuku. Eh, Mdu拉斯Tulu, ketsama kudumela na le exploitation of land. Ki tata kaholo uli, mpamo na mering. Ki siobi siobi. Kudumela na le exploitation of land. Mara, hakidumela na le, le ukenau, how, 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 how exploit where ya land? Obo, obo pata. Because how sheba eh, kana inti ndatin. Ntozete nte diyeta, te ngata te nana. Hadka wasai tuwa ntozin. Le fazi liunkue, hobatu fela chenan. MPa aseltamea ho chuteruho one. Ho atuwa oru ta mele bapa, bapa, bapa talepi. Ha, le haona le ale muaka projusan, ori. Kana inti ndatini, kintize buka na ki regali fazi leli ka. So, ki total against eh, compensation. Ke batla, fazi lochutela, ho, ho batu ba, ho bembalona. Kas kana nte le wembalo. Eh, happen kai, kaiksa, mena liona kienana ya, ori kisho halifazi, le re, le rekoaki, batu ba kantle, de foreigners. That's the master. Le, ntoya di komonejis, hasen solushi. Ko frustrate ya batu because ta fuma na eh, eh, batu ba deti. Ba, ba ona komoneji, ana owa sheba komonejeni nyana. Ho ta fuma na owa juetsa oru, ta mele uhuo kumtesave. Ono uhuo atatesave. Marakuwa sema animali nte plasi manu. Uhuu yezze, uhuu yezze sebanandret. Hakalu kialibo.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Siobi Siobi. I support the bill wholeheartedly. However, there's a section in the bill that I don't support. The one which says that land should be taken without compensation. I believe that our land was taken from us for free forcefully. But now that it has to be returned to us, we have to buy it. That I don't agree with. The land should return to its owners. And the other thing is komonejis. I don't think komonejis is a solution to the problem because you'll find that in the komonejis, there are thirty people who stay there. And then they are only being allowed to own seven cows, a little number of cows. However, the farmer will be owning lots and lots of cattle. So let the land return to the rightful owners without compensation. Thank you.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Eh, I'm Pasaka Mukwena from Polu. So, today we came here to come and talk about this bill of land. This is a very serious issue. And I think, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take this very serious. Because if something very important is not done, this can lead to a very serious conflict. But now the problem is how the land is retained. We have to buy the land? Yes, it's a problem. The people who are owning the land now, they have bought the land. Because if we go to any farmer, show you the title deed. But those, those who took the land first, they didn't buy the land. But now it's up to our leaders in parliament, how are they dealing with the issue? Because the party that I'm belonging to, which is EFF, they are saying we must. Even myself, I'm part of that, the land must be taken without compensation. But nevertheless, some farmers have made some improvement in the farmers, there's windmills, there's everything. So the compensation can be done. But I don't know the government of today, they have money to buy the land. Because the land is very important. We can't plow anything. We don't have town at Polu. We have to travel thirty-five kilometers to come to Bethlehem and buy something. So we need piece of land to have sports facilities for our children. Because this land issue is very important for our children and grandchildren. Poor people like me, if we have to take the land by force, even if the Thadwell War can start tomorrow, poor people like me, we have nothing to lose. But at least we are human beings. Let's take this very serious. Let the people get the land so that we can plow, can have a sports field. And our children, we must always think about them. They must have the future also. I think.
Kudumela, kialidumedi sa. Kina Elsavi Mukwena. Kamuha ona ndatemudimarefili ona tsasila kashen ntsuro vitin haperebonana. Na, kiaiu ka tavae na le fazi, ki emong ahulete ma plasi nga ho. Eh, eh, the history kela tel. Batwa na na hava neba filha, kashen ilugua kaba thwacho angantle ba rekan le fazi. Batwa kantle ba le rikset. Buana hava neba kalau filha, mo ni kabo eighteen mamam, ba ike netzela mahala. Ba filha ba be amila oya bo ne etata, ye neba la ba ibe, kana ko ye. Jali, nakineki. Le fazi oka na lifua mama hala kapamango lifua kachalate huetuwa. Ebo shoko kiyena, na hakitume kaparu, kisomshuku va nepu sesele batwa batu na. Obani jali, howo wa sheba? Otuwa kana intifor, oya morao. Howo nozama ma plasi, unozama dipuleken zentla ha hulu. Onobona di mahulu, ama te di homu di pofolo di. Ebo shoko abo masimu, di bone, di goru di, di, di sonoblom, di je etu. Because itinai di pelisa batu. Ho fuwa batu mesebezi. Enos na ntoena hori, jali, saretla mia oharreka papa. Koko pufier monari yambatwa batu. Esaretla mia o etu bo kantle, jali, otuwa ta yamunana. Banne ba lema, ba yezza di yo, ba yezza laika ba ki. Marah, hajali zenan. Habasa yeza nte nu haesa leo. Halifazi lochutela batwa batu. Batwa batu hava fumanedi traini. Masimu hape, koko di ma plasimo. Ho be hape bukala ba, ni rebu tiba bukleba, ni di pofolo zena kau fela. Husko hava li ntoana hori. Alifuma ni jali ana walwa, na wali ba ta wali seka, mali ana walba ta wali seka. Kibian teli ungrusha ni jali kaba thwaba. Jali, kha re ntsuro sharanipili batwa na ba filha. Eh, baba mbaba ona swashai zimona haesele ba haiba, ba monana South Africa. Mara, banne ba shere, le fazi hantle because batwa neba fuwa mesebezi, uno na di di pofo. Koko nere yam hantle, repila hantle. Mara hona zenan na hakisheba. Ki bo na bu tata fela, howo wa zama ma plasimo na. Ba ruili di pofolo zena zehla ha. Di inga da fela mo nu, ye mu liu mu plasinya, ruili pofolo zehla ha. Haosa na masimu, haosa na leto mo nu, jali, he. Ho abana hala, habasa ratu uchisa batwa batu. Kana ni tuwo shoko, obankel fazi waluchu so wembalona kialibo.
I greet you all. My name is Els, oh, I greet you all, the grace of God. My name is Elsavi Mukwena. I grew up in the farms. And one thing I can tell you, I follow history. You see, when foreigners came here in eighteen, some, in eighteen somethings, they got this land for free. And they put these difficult laws that we could not follow. But most importantly is that, see, in nineteen ninety-four, and backwards, when you, when you travel across the land, you'll see nice places that are green, kettles, corns, sonobloms, and people had employment. No, no food that we bought overseas. But now, this pap that we eat, this mealie meal that we have to cook with, now we have to buy it overseas. But I like to ask that we train black people. And you'll see those greener pastures and those good places that we used to, we used to see. We don't want this thing that people have to fight all over the land, but we can be united as one. Actually, people can have work. Now I see problems in these farms that are occupied now. You can see now, they have wild animals, wild animals. Which tell us that they don't want to have farms that produces food anymore. So therefore, I say, give back black people their land. It is their land.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Thank you. My name is Krista Eking. I am from Afri Forum in Bethlehem. I would first like to say that I'm a bit concerned about the fairness of distribution of the land. I personally know a lady that, in Bethlehem, that has been granted three farms of more or less two hundred and thirty hectare each. She does not have the financial means or the knowledge to make use of these farms to provide for a family. She's not allowed to sublet the farm, to receive an income from it. She's not allowed to sell the farm. There is no financial gain for her. So according to me, expropriation of land will just end up in more poverty as the people need money, the people need work in order for them to purchase their own land. Dormant land in our country is a waste. It negatively influence our economy. Most of this dormant land is the municipality's land. Thank you.
Hare kala nje. Kinalifazi lela ngata kamo chota le makaza. Ibile bo na wana babasu, lela ngaba le sebedisi. Sele bizwa Arabol Land. Lele ngunzo shalosi amona, ezze le kenyadi pofolo zehla. Mo basa ba timi fela ogo, le fazi lewele ho wemba bo. Balu shono lohaka kan, ba ogo formalizing process. Buana basa kamba formalizing, hava napu tuwa le fazi, hava lenga balu uji eti. Who, who, who has food security, Timo? Food security will not be hemmed. Obani. Ntatemoluwa kalebo, ndatemoluwa ba hona ba batwa batu. Ki bo na basa be example, basa be example la si. Eh, longolo, mahoa fichefa la aputile ma zo. Manzwa rokuwa se, trutre verk vanda. Eh, kio hono grand, ya vas. Re batala fazi le, no, kinaliskill send expertise as black people, as origins of this, of this land. Honkana fazi huli so wembalona. Muruolo no tlapahama. Hakiboni financieros, huswa kaga mutu tumuho ono pama. O tlapahama, o sa pahameki, kinkile po uso. Ra thwala mata dipolo tiki, re batamata, asimuhu na konze. Haru shoku medeni nguche na, eh, muso haeso. Haru sekendra regisalifazi, yolka le regi bagenzinga tabo keep down the man. You rather lease the land than to sell the land. Katsale yalo, aska, hakutu lo kodi sa, mona na kaba tala fazi labun tataro, eh, hunu tudi pa impiri mo. Ketsi heta eh, eh, billi. The chapter five funds of work on compensation, haru bapa tali. Le lenga yolka nele lungu ele fazi, ke ketele.
Good morning. My name is Siti Mela Mutahu. Good morning. My name is Siti Mela Mutahu. I'm going to express myself... I'm going to express myself in my language, saysoto, which is on these issues regarding our fatherland. We start to say that we've got plenty of land. And most of the land is not used. It is arable land. Now, these whites use it for game farming. And they are blessed because the government is allowing them to, to follow procedures and processes in expropriating of land. Knowing, knowing that they did not get the land fairly. They stole our land. An excuse that food security is going to be hempered is not going to work. Whites have always been, been discriminating us, calling us with names like kubas and stuff like that. We need the land as black people. The land must be restored to the rightful owners so that we can develop the economy. When we took over government, we only got political power. Now it is up to government to give us economic power. We should not sell this land, instead it should be leased. This is our fatherland. And regardless of the chapter five that speaks about expropriation with compensation, I'm saying that the land should be taken back to its rightful owners without any money given to those who benefited unfairly. Thank you.
Eh, kedu mayise mutama isua msende. Eh, libito laga kimandla Ungozo. Eh, kimembaga ya ANC. Kereke sapatabi liena. Ma ba kauri kesapote bilie na kia uri, lefazi, otlamelele huitlele oba twa batu. Obani lefma buru hanangala fazi leena. Alinkile asapata. So hali huitlele oba twa batu. Obana hoka sheba ba tu mbaba tu, nutu tu ngona. Kinali, namba yo hulu ya unemployment. Ene namba yo ya unemployment, ikhusu ekua na ma buru ana kauri. Atibela ba twa di ba ru na di plasi. Ho batele keixinin mon. Ba sebeze ka ba twa ba nyani. Amo sebezu lemona. Ba hutela le keixinin ba inke ba twa ba ru na ba ilo ba sebezi. Baba patale di chelite zenyani. Kela lefazi leena hali hutelo ba twa batu. Motu amutu ki motu assebeza ngatata. Keta ituta huri, hulingwa jwaan. Keta honoli ma leru na, muruana hau, otlai eketsé. Obani honache na na lantze ba ru muruana hau atewu. Hau kacheba de same people ba twa contribute amu ruo ngwana. Ki buana ba twa batu. Obani kuru ne re re kankabona tatu opo. So hutseza chelite nuhape mu. So hale fazi lehutlezu ru na lema hapé. Keta hona u pojuza di yote ngat. Ke honori, moruana ha u nyulu e hap. Ha ona sehula motu amutu. Habaska ne ba ru ma buuana, di investor ga di no, tla ditu ota di investor ati. Obani di ba ta chelit. Habasa atiba ta investor ka. Obani di yote ote keta beki di etamo, lebuana ba ta ba di sebezi. Lefazi leena hali hutelo motu amutu. Kela leshoka, kela leba. Keta hono keta unemployment. Chapter five, eh, bilie ne ba ngotimun. Nane kire, high abolition. Ha ona lefazi lehutlele pata. Kela lebata lefazi leena lehutlele horu, aman.
I greet you, program director. My name is Mandla Ungozo. I support this bill. Because, you see, le- land belong to the blacks. When the bulls came here, they took this land freely. And when they did, then when you, when you look around, blacks are the ones that are unemployed by numbers. Also, the bulls, they chase our parents in the township when there's less work. And when suddenly, there's more work, they come and get our parents and give them mega salary. Blacks are hard workers. We will learn how to farm. And also, we will be economically uplifted. Also, the black people, they're in large numbers. They're the ones who goes in town and buy. So therefore, if they have the land, the money will go back to them. We will know how to farm because of, we have the wills. This thing that there will be no investors. Investors will always come because of, they want money and they also want food. So they must get rid of this thing, of this, eh, chapter five, abolish it. So that's why I say, as blacks, we need this land. Amanza.
Eh, kialibua. Kalibito ki goliwa, Mkomezulu. Kitzawa napukuku mona. Eh, nane kire ba twesu, harakalenchie, mi papan. Eh, razeva South Africa mona ba tata ba ro na, fikbuka dilega sixteen fifty-two. Haba twa vanje na, na ba fisha gaskebe, beresava twa hova blela kama wizo va ite. Hane ba fisha, ba thola, eh, husonzo na leba twa tu lamun. Ba fisha ba ngan fazi, ba hava ba discover ile, eh, na. Mi putu na o discover, jwaan melo, hononzo na leba twa, ba, ba, ba planti, dibuidziri insedi wile hore. Ba twa hane ba fisha mon, ba fisha leba sa shara chelit. If we lejali naretla ko pahe, obana di rekhotome lohore. Hola wana le, le tumela no, ya tehki se zanu, ya lefazi te. Impa he, kau vanerazeva hore, eh, na ba yete lezupili kela pantitile lohore, le janfa nubek. Eh, buto ziki ntwavon. Ki kahoba ilimba, ba, ba, ba ipala fazi kana ku efitile. Dibuidziri insedi wile mona na ka, kaba twa na waga ni debi lohore, ba, ba unal fazi. Oza maya hoshi mona, eh, around Dichabén, leta mufuzanyanka kaka rezo, othola hana le maplasi, eh, lohore. Esale motu aireka, ayseye alifalo feela ba twa, buhona maplasi mo ba la ba, habasebezi, habasbuhona ba yezze. Eh, mweki exploitation ya di farm dwellers. Ki boraplas. Eh, dibuidi thulo mona horo, boraplas ba na handen, ba pila kaba twa buhona ba twa, ba assebeleza maplasi. Ma othola lohore ma yemo ba twa buhona ba pila mo, eh, ba pila ngatla saon. Ki ma yemo asenghaninte, eh, lohore, ayeswa kama boom. Ki ba twa na bamala ve lohore, eh, eh, ki ba ipa, ki, ki, ki ba ipita wemba lfazi. Eh, yabu be di ki hore ba twa buhona, eh, hau kala hua, uwa nyana, o subjecte tuhaya komoneji. Komoneji lohore kabu yona, ena luthata ba hore, kosu kaidi komoneji teka ofela, dina le problem esirasi ya uva grazi. Ha ona medipofolo tava ba twa buhona, me, 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 me di jande, ha ona medino medite. Eh, kahou, eh, kaskadi buide, de, de, efitile ha di thulo, hore, eh, ichu ya food security, retso so afel. Ha ona, ha ona, eh, 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 oru redota so kula ra food security lohore. Kanala ma zo, hore, leba twa batu, ha uki ketet. Eh, hakikate la kere, eh, re, re itola, re le, ki kama di ma, eh, hore, kajukje na. Keta me ya huni goshi, tala ba twa utziti. Hore, kutsit. Ko husana la motu ka uza kulu ya hau. Eh, ira hau e thola ba huenano, osu tamilo weireka hunna, obani segi genzari tayazincha. Mu ma di ma weki ba hore, huni goshi, tala ba twa be lohore. Eh, ba tamilo hore, fasi, se li insa on. Impa re itola re monana, keta otreka hore, kana ni erko pa hore, hutse. Sreklamiya hore, reke hapé hovon, kialibon.
My name is Mr. Mkomezulu. Let's not beat about the bush. We ha- we have long lived here. When the, the whites came here in sixteen fifty-two, they found us here. And they did not have any money. We want records showing that they did buy the land. And I doubt that those records are, are, are here, because they didn't buy it. There are many farmers, farm, farm, farms that are not being utilized, that are, are, are just laying there, not being utilized. But instead of being given to black people, they are just sitting there. Eh, black people are exploited in the farms because they, once you, you, you talk too much, they take you to commonagies, which are a big problem. Because our animals don't have enough grazing land in those commonagies. We don't, it's unfortunate that we find ourselves in this situation whereby we need to negotiate with people who stole our land, instead of just expropriating it without compensation. Thank you so much.
Hozo. Yeroa uwa ankes Simon Simpe, ukua fatensu, ki emesi PFA, Patriotic Front of Azani. Liene lefazi leena la haguru. De ula ngoba lebatu, ba tlenba sasakaramizi ba tala lenk. Haba kataba ihanasakaro ba di kilabu nta tavo. Nwala ba nta tavo, nyala kaai. Homena ki abo, nyaha homena insu ya Africa. Hari la te, sutuwa ya hamang. Siskarata kala wesi, impa homeli abo. Yali shaba sa isu. Haru shebe kana tleka mona. Misanzi kana ba mingata, kaba eminga. Hau lu lu ba twa mona kisabeng. Pa ba na, utuwa swenta fi tama tala, January to Januar. Le kakismis, luarik dia fita. Ti illem ma ya amo bu. Dia isetkepe. Dia isa kaip. Misutenge kana tle. Musua nohakuwa sheba hore, ote hani sebezi. Atuwa di ba zipo sebeza. Hari misutala rapa. Impa re entwe, ikati misutala rapa, mikote ma. Hari buhena ma so, hari pa misen sebe, tebe ki ozi li.
Greetings. The one who's speaking here is Simon Simpe from Fatensu. P, and I represent PFA. This is our land. This is our father's land. There are people who came on the, from the oceans, and they came here and took our land, made it their land. This is not their land. This kettle, which is our land, belong to Africa. We cannot buy milk when we have cows and kettles. You see, January to January, we see trucks coming here in the farms, but does not bring any employment for our dwellers here. We ask the government to create employment. They make us as if we are lazy, and we are not lazy. So we say we must stand up. Thank you.
Thank you to all the speakers.
Kile wedi buika ofela se wile.
Let's acknowledge the presence of the following. DA Councilor, Councilor Far Nigard.
Ri ki amu heleba la telama councilora wa DA, ma councilora Far Nigard.
Eh, these are the ANC councilors.
Banaba la telangima councilora ANC.
MMC Jacobs.
MMC Jacobs.
MMC Mabizela.
MMC Mabizela.
The speaker of Dichabén municipality.
Speaker of Sadichabén municipality.
ANC Teke.
ANC Teke.
ANC Rakabe.
AMC Raktebe.
Oh, okay, thank you. Eh, Councilor Marias.
Ma councilora Marias.
They are all ANC councilors.
Banaka ofela kima councilora ANC.
You are all welcome.
Me li amu he, tuki hoon.
That is Marias, ne? Okay, apology. I was given a list of ANC councilors, serious apology. Councilor Marias is the DA councilor.
Ki kupatuarelo, ma councilora Marias, ki ma councilora wa DA. Kobani banee ban pile, le na ne la ma councilora ANC, de se ki mu kenyelisa mon.
But Councilor Raktebe has the forms. You can let him join. Eh, I am now going to take the very, very last round.
Jali kinkamu hatlelo hau, tetetetela.
Eh, can you please raise your hands?
Ki kupali pa misema zo hoba ba twa ngubua.
Okay. One, two, three. Four. One side point, they took this, come to this chest.
Haku su pa oboso otlao tula di tulon zena zemon.
Any other hand, other people on this side? Any other hand, other people on this side?
Ana hunalima zo aman kalela korin lela.
Okay, I'm coming to this side.
Jali kitlaka mon.
Speaker, Councilor Marias. Is that ladies? Councilor Jacobs.
Ma councilora Jacob, ali ma councilora Mabizela. Li kati la, la kena ma ni di tulon zele.
And, and, and the tree there?
Le ba ane ba ba ra romu ra omol.
If the, if the chests are ten, let's add another chest, this is the last round.
Haiba di tulodihayela mo, ba ken saba twa beki ba su pile. Ki tate leza ngatse di ngoba ni ki mu haxelo hau, tetela ona.
Can you add more chests there?
Ki kupadi tulotenga ta mo, mo ba twa, ba ka tulam, banaba twa bua.
Any other hand?
Ana hunalima zo hua aman hapé?
Any other hand? Any other hand?
Banaki ba hutketela, sata ngaba twa ban kama ra bu na, kama ra banakopa noya kua.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. Um, uh, I am Councilor Karina Far Nigard, I'm from the Democratic Alliance. And I'm here to say that we oppose the Bill of Expropriation Without Compensation. Um, this bill, the amendments proposed to this bill would definitely influence the investments of our country negatively. And the investors would not be, um, would feel, would not feel secure to come and invest in South Africa. That would also affect jobs negatively as well as food security. It would also negatively impact the security of the current title deeds that are owned of property owners that have title deeds at the moment. Investors will bring, who bring more money into the country and they deposit a lot of more money into our economy. They will not be, uh, at, at, at ease for coming into our country to invest more. That will negatively affect our economy. Uh, the current property owners have invested a lot of money into buying property that they own. Some pay bonds on properties and that ha- they have worked hard to pay those bonds. In terms of bank security, what would happen to the bank, the bonds the banks have with buyers? Banking businesses will be very negatively affected. And another, on the, on the flip side of it, if property is also given for free to, to, um, to everybody, why, why would then they see the, the responsibility to pay rates and taxes? So the main, main income of municipalities would collapse due to non, um, non-income of rates and taxes. So we oppose this bill. Thank you very much.
Eh, kile wuha holo. Ay mona keiza mamsimanga, na kito buela, sicha ba sa wote. Jali sicha ba hau lulu samaplasin. Se kopa na, le di nthwa hahulu, se zwang, eh, ki uwa na mahua hanan. Na kitlashalosa antikere, ki motu, eh, lohore, bekelebeke, fmana di, kitlarkidi report, ene hapé ki motu lohore lakza male do to do, ki mo elu kia iponeela hore. Sicha ba samaplasin, din nga ta matatilo, wanze ba sheba ni lohona. Leuana jali mahua, anta atibela ba twa buhuru. Lewa na jale mahua, anta ati bela batba bohu na be, deelu banale history bahuli sitimun, ma bahuli senting. But you have a lot of fala, and ba kinsa ore jale ba mufele fasila, ha bu ba bohona rubitire ba mutibel. Kanaku ngwile intadua la pe, ana sebele Simon maplasing, asufitla na kuya ha e, asasa honu sebele, sa ba muza ma isabe jalo. Lebueema ba du lan katla su bohona, mtsoko na roba kakenyisa mtlakasi. Impa mahua kuona ati bamonka kalorifasi kilabona. Ababa tu kina obuiswa ne. De ma tu ano amonunun, ba du la ngubona batva bohu, nintele ma tu ano achale huli jalo. Ha okafila monunun, hasibeye muho muho tu akadu lamun. Vale, na jale kamutu anta alimun, shakiya bilivore. Kitzamele na na lo na mla ona, mla oka ba hutlu, ngarata obona, kara wotea kau chinchaa. Ba chaba ba antikiri, kinsaki bilivore, dintho kachiincha. Ha kera hutlu antikiri kaya ona agriculture, van banze baliteng batva itase la. Blen, na kinsaki china, kinsaki swati mo elu ore, kiba dilaka ona agriculture fe la. Ne la, nintele ten karamonana, ere itzakiskira hono zede lo ya pe. Vale, na karatorire rupe kaya ona place, vananatase lo, kaya ona tu. And then, eh, kichokiri kialewa, kama monu. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Zamam Simanga. And I represent Ward 10, which is in the farms. And some of the people that dwell there are whites who are here. What I can tell you is that, week in and week out, I get reports and I also do door to door, which enables me to see how farm workers live. People in farm, in farm, in farmlands are being chased away by farm owners. Our people are really struggling. Some people, when they get old, you find that the farm, the farm owner chasing because of he has no use for him. An old man who cannot work anymore is being chased away by the farm worker. Sometimes the whites stop, they, they cannot agree to have, the farm workers to have electricity. For what? We don't know. The houses there are dilating and then they are not in the condition that people can live there. As a youth, I agree with this bill. I believe that things can change. I have studied a lot about agriculture and I also want to go into agriculture. And I think I can make a change in agriculture. That is why I want this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, colleagues. Let me do a clarion call, which was first held by Langalibalele Dubé. When this unjust apartheid system robbed us of our land. In 1912, when the ANC was formed, they had a clarion call that the people shall govern. And in 1955, the Freedom Charter again made that clarion call. That no government shall claim authority over its people if it is not the will of the people. And the mere that apartheid system was an oppression was the system to oppress the black minds. The Freedom Charter states again, the land shall be shared among those who live in it. Let's cut the myth that, that there will not be any investment. Where was investments when the white bourgeoisie took our land for two rent and leased for 80 years? Where was investments when the white bourgeoisie took our people, the Quaisan people in the Western Cape and make them the third world, eh, people of this world? Where was the, the investments when this land was dispossessed of their, of our forefathers? The forebears of this land? They took us to mountainous places where we cannot even grow even a, a banana. The ruthless white regime took our land so that they can benefit and they took us and they give us names like the infidel so that we should live under their wings forever and ever. Our unsung heroes of our time, hero and heroines, who fought for freedom of this world, never tasted freedom. They were exiled, tortured because of one thing: land. Today, we affirm that we support the expropriation of land without compensation because when Nelson Mandela, the former president of this country, was held in prison, they, they make sure that he must never enjoy the freedom of land. Kajeno, retabere Peter Haza, ditabata belo taba Timu Baruna, basoka etembaro baladu kotesi, mahua ona, ay kadi le garajuan, bobutala ba, ba jaladi pony, ba, 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 ba bua kadu investment is agante. Because they knew that they benefit from the international world. Because they knew that when ba, ba exporter, and ba exporter di, 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 di malfatilena, they benefited us. Rona warupada la kapofe. But Timu bayala today, mobile itemabite, they are dancing in the grave because baro basika du kotesi, eh, bawata di kati ba fati, harbona a white, a white person. We will not be racist, but we are saying we affirm and support the expropriation of land without compensation. We asking for equality and justice. Anyone else speak?
The time is up, eh, Mr. Ra Kebbe. The time is up.
My name is Jan Ra Kebbe. I never thought my time would, hey.
It's three minutes only.
Thank you very much.
This is Sutupat. Today, we are fulfilling the wills of our ancestors and our forefathers. The whites are talking about investments as if we know nothing about the investment. They exploit us and then export food and have money and only pay us with millimeal, as if we don't know how to make monies. Today, our ancestors are crying because of this.
A reminder, you only have three minutes. When the three minutes is over, we indicate to you.
Thank you very much, Chair. My name is Ignisias Motalupula Mukwena. I support the amendment of Section 25 of the bill. Reason is because I believe that it, it does not make sense that in our own land, you cannot operate properly because you do not have enough space. I believe that there is a, there is a, this, this narrative that is, that has been created, that expropriation of land will affect investor interest. Who will this, eh, eh, affect, how will this affect the investor confidence? The same land is worked by black, black people and has, has been worked by our forefathers. We cannot be held to ransom by the same people who stole our land with arrogance and they, they still display the same arrogance because they feel that they are entitled to the asset of our forefathers. I thank you very much.
Chairperson, the House, good morning. My name is Marius Mare, so known as Councilor Marius Mare, from the Democratic Alliance. Let me make it clear, I do not, my submission is not in support of the passing of this bill. And the reasons is simple. It's government's duty and responsibility to work on behalf of the people for the people. It's government's duty and responsibility to see to it that the people of this country moves forward, that this country goes forward for the benefit of the people. The time for government has come to put an end to talk black and white. And the time has come for government to move this country forward with all its people, irrespective of race. This bill says what may be expropriated. It says, according to the Constitution of South Africa, Section 25, 4B, property is not limited to land. Thus, any property, including movable property and immovable property, may be expropriated. This bill is saying that every person in this country, whatever you own, irrespective of your ethnicity, if you own something, this bill will give the right to government when government needs your property, that they can expropriate it from you. In other words, if you own a private house, government can expropriate your house irrespective if your surname is the Quaker, Mukwena, or Far Niker. And that is the danger. Mistakes has been made in the past. Let government not make the same mistake that was done in the past. And let government work for the people to protect the people of this country. Let's not make a mistake in passing a bill that will see the people of this country losing their only one thing left, and that is their ownership of property. Please do not take away the property from, from our people of this country. I thank you.
Now, thank you very much, greetings to all. My name is Teke. I'm just in here in order to submit my inputs with regard to the expropriation or in support of the bill. Chairperson and the partner, if you, different speakers have alluded to the fact that the historical imbalances of the past played a significant role, that ultimately led us to be here today in order to try to redress the imbalances of the past. Now, I, I support the bill to be implemented, which will enable the minister, in line with the clauses of the bill, to exercise powers in making sure that we redress, we, we redress the imbalances of the past. If you look at the Freedom Charter, which is a very important document, given the dispensation and the history of our country, it's clearly stated that the land shall be shared among those who work and live in it. As things turn now, the land that is a lawful, it is possessed of our people, it is benefiting certain few individuals at the expense of the majority of our people who are not currently owning lands. And our municipality, not only municipality of Dihlabeng or Mufizanyan, throughout the country, our people are being evicted on daily basis from the land which rightfully belongs to them. Now, with regard, if the bill can be implemented as such, it will definitely make sure that people are not evicted because the land will be used for public interest rather than being used to the benefit of individual. Now, we, I support the bill to be implemented as such so that the imbalances of the past can be addressed. Looking at the chapter seven of it, as indicated, it will definitely, if the bill implemented, assist in making sure that our people are, their dignity is restored. Our people, because it will be in their own interest, the land will be used for them to their benefit. Thank you so much.
Melan, kintabisenfinga. Na kibuasasutfenyer. Jale, na ketsa manzo pa. Kikubuela la truste aru, na truste rena le ona, ma rotsana fe. Na kibatu plima batu. Batwa tu renthozogofela, ba ro tuska aniks. Re na li truste, sali reka reka reka, re na li 20 years, 25 years. Ba na ona pe agathada, ba isagri culture, ba ite mel, re zwa le, ma re na dre kere, ma re na aniks. Bela ro tu plima mammo, ba na mutu buan kai. Katu bua kama, kulekukupawe, bonne abatwa mona ba ukamisi, ba kalo shabalitshabi le trust, ma na manzo pa. Ba lo shaba, ba tuaduzi, ba kene muho aru na fe, ba tuaduzi ma ho. Jale re pe mbluwo, na kikutu, buta ba tuan mbluwo nu, kia uta oplasi ya tabe, ma re hareso tu leto. Bana ba aru na rso teida, ba sebele, ma, ba, 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 ba re re na li plasi, kene reku. Jale, eke, eke li, eke li, pami se ba tuaba, eke li, ke se ba tu. Ke sebele se ba tuaba, zwa ba, ba na li truste. Na kibu shoku ka ndakibatu bua ma, kibu shoku, ka truste aru.
I'm Tabisenfengani, representing Le Chabile Trust. Fenyer. Finga. Tabisenfinga, representing Le Chabile Trust. My concern here is we have a trust, but it is not helping us. Our children are unemployed, they've been taken to agricultural schools, but still nothing is happening. So my appeal is for black people to support each other. There's no point in pointing fingers and saying that the government is doing nothing for us, whereas ourselves, we are not supporting each other. Thank you.
Isali ba itui sa kala kajenu, go na te re la pi, kikene mori kina li ter five years. Kazi kula na kina li 57 years. Robushoku hakaka iloko muho owaru tus. Utu amuha ba ba masibita muho. Baske balatela, ho sheba ona, projecti efue ba tu, kapai ngefue ba tu. Go na isabeza antikiri. Ye na ya ona plasi ne sebeza antikiri, inali di awat. Ha ona manasati meka na plasi na ya ona, ba tu. Hanache na yuglikiri, mesele zeka ware, kuto ku pa tu so sichabisa ku. Lu ba na ba ona, ba ilin dibeneficia. Dintho zegriti ba ku. Ibleka re na li bo pa ki, ba tuabnu, ras ba bisika ma biso, ba uwe, kibu ona ba di ling, projecti na ya ona, kazi kula na, ibe lo kowe, ewe. Oda ku onzoluwa, o tu nsebele ya i. Nsebele iti, ba ba le fa pa wa sa tusimba tu, ba, kude ba, ba ta milu ona tel la, mi cha ya ona, sebele tu ewan, ha ve ki kai e. Ho ho nu tu kai bua ba tu. Ba ja chelte aru, o ba ni ki ki, ye na ba ni, re na li ba ba na te kopa ni du ona, banze ba juetare tuaka di miti ni, haru po tera, ba juetare, chelte aru na ya Bekele Mas Trust, i juo kuona muho ona walunu o buku. So, rekupa, pa la ben, ka kupo, i ke bua ona, ita tu sa juan, di singe ne re li unu. O ba ni muho okeke ti, mo bu. Re no sebele is, plasiya nu isali isaksi, i chelte every year. Kialewa ba tu.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sokolo Mota. I want to talk about a farm that we used to own. I've been saying this, and this is the third time, about this saying, saying things about this farm. This farm, which we started to inhabit in 1998, was closed in 2016. We were doing very well and producing a lot of crops, and there was also employment. So from 2016 to 2021, the provincial government, as well as the Department of Agriculture, was not helpful in resuscitating the farm. We are struggling as farm dwellers as a result of this closure. And we are very hungry. I started to stay in that farm at the age of 35. I am now 57 years old. We are pleading to government to come and assist us, to assist us in this endeavor. Our farm was very progressive. Over the years, it won awards. And we want to have this farm as a legacy for our children. However, we also have got evidence of the people who collapsed this farm. We are pleading to government to intervene. And we are also pleading for government to deal with those who are corrupt because the money has been exchanged as we lost this farm. We as Bethlehem Farm Trust, we are asking our government to intervene. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, program director. Let me take this opportunity to greet the leadership. Program director, I'm going to be shot like a minisket. My name is Bonganima Donzela. I support the expropriation of land without compensation. Erici Petard, I support the expropriation of land without compensation. Now, because in our own country, a country of our fathers, whites own majority of our land, they dominate the JSE. They own our minerals. And as black people, we are very poor in our own country. Nobody was born with experience. So it's nonsense to say black people will not utilize the land because of lack of experience. It's nonsense and it must be rejected because the view is opportunistic. Now, hantekiduti monaki bone ha babasu ibabua mahua ahonala ha hole. Solulona babasu, onalan ha hole, le skarekisa, hovani. Eh, batuana basewitza, chelate, ofiti sa, debiliti impotente, skatenan. So ra copa, harabatlebanabalona eh, in future, batualema vitalon. Thank you very much.
So two translation. Whilst I was sitting there, I noted that white people were writing a lot. So I'm making a plea to black people, please write down a lot. Because these people, they use this writing to influence such bills. So we don't want to repeat these things so that your children can come and curse your grace. Thank you very much.
Dumelang, ki mulihe du mi. The chairperson here sees a cultural creative industry in Tawumfutanyan. I as well, I'll be very short, like one is okay, minisket, man. But that being said, the issue of land, it's a vast issue. It's very big. It's a very fundamental issue as well. And then, there's one thing that worries me. Tawumfutanyani has all races. It has white people and all that. But I see a little of those people who are, we are here for, actually who we believe, who we know they stole our land. And in the little we know and I doubt, that the lot that has been said here, it will be noted, it will be recognized. Boholo varunamona, we've been doing the reputation that we support chapter five. We need our land back as black people. We deserve it, as we all know that the land was taken crucially from us. These people, they just came and they found us in this particular land. So can that be, even the setup perhaps, I so wish it was more relevant to so for everyone to have a chance and engage further with this issue here, the land. And personally, I can see it's only issue here, what you have, and then submit it. But then, this issue, it's big. I can say whatever that I can say, but it's been reputation, people have been saying it. I as well support chapter five. The land must be back to the native land, to the natives of this country. I thank you.
Ikelebo, kalibizwe ki muzalefa maluleka. And then, as and when it was that, I'm only hoping for this process is not only meant to retake the boxes as the government. About 369 years ago, can 1960, can 1952, Hani mahua afikla kwanula bing, baritwete center lateing, barinkeela. Me only can 1975, this bill ke hai ipasuwa. Hanajuali, re lady processinse vatlanile se lopamore ntsa expropriation, expropriation without compensation, yet it is not happening. Ke ema mona habi, ke riki supporta the bill itself. But this is just the tip of an iceberg because there's more to it than Mr. I. Our constitution, if we check out the preamble, it says South Africa belongs to everyone that lives in it. Be it white people, black people, despite the injustices that had happened before the bill was passed. So I'm saying, mo buaronaha huutli, no hutajualu, hosna chelate, italangor ipataal. Hovainkele 369 years, hori baika ele kara mobuon. So how hutala horon, lerona hara tcholidile motengata, tcholene, on how to to utilize mobuonwaron, kialebo.
So two translation. In 1682, when the whites arrived, they found us black here and they took our land. Only in 1975, the bill was passed. But today, it's processes after processes, expropriation, expropriation without compensation, yet nothing is happening. I support the bill. Bring back our land. It took them 369 to build. We also need lot of years so that we can utilize our land. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mapaseka Magalakalan. I'm from the traditional healers fora. We are pleading with government to say we need land or a place where we can do our traditional healing activities. Our land has been taken and used for wild game farming. We are asking our government to help us, to help us get land so that we can be able to plant and grow our herbs. Secondly, we have a problem with government. The government is not involving us as traditional healers, particularly on issues of the disease burden. For instance, we are not involved in participating in finding a vaccine or a remedy towards diseases that are experienced. Therefore, as traditional healers, we are saying to government, please help us. We need land to be able to grow the traditional herbs to be used for medicinal value or medicinal reasons. Thank you.
Dumelang, kalibizo ki emeli mabisela, ki monaka jenu hotosapota the bill, hori lifasi la warona lukulisezo de rightful owners without compensation. Katlasama waka ana alatela. Harolo kitobuelila batwadi plasin because I'm the voice of the voiceless, ya batwama plasin. Re bonama tata karamaplas, batwarona papatala mitlakas. Lifasi la wintataro, batwawarona banametzili di homu, lifasi la wintataro. Batwawarona bakhonurala patsi, bayareka, everything ya arekama plasin, lifasi la wintataro. Ki bu madimabiba hori kajenu lena, ritamilo nishigoshiaita. Kabakala lifasi lukulela horona, impa hane lunkua, lelenunkua kama hahapa. Ri riwele ri shoka lifasi la runa, ri pilajalo kadiko konyana, ri bokani karosbaka sisni nanyan. Harana de swimming pool, baba sewu, bana baba onaba khonato la, ki de swimming pooli, ki kuri, ntwango le ngwe itembakilaka wikietu, bat runa benbalifazi. Ri pilatlasa hatello, ki rifaleki klosapota this bill, ri tabitsa hole, kialebo.
My name is Emli Mabisela. I stand here to support the bill, but most importantly, I'm the voice of the voiceless people who live on the farms. We see many problems that are being experienced by people who live in the farms. They have the land, that is the land of their fathers, but they drink water with animals. They buy everything instead of just growing plants in the farm so that they can survive. The whites live luxurious lives when we struggle. Their children have swimming pools, they have everything that they need. But we as black people, we don't have anything because we don't have land. Please assist us in getting our land back. Thank you.
Dumelang, kalibizo ki Sophie Matuso Jacobs. Kile councillor from ANC, onamunachabing. Relawila harolo haritlilito utohorna, ma ikutaruna kafi. Billionaire isapota, but chapter five, copa i, ito. Ntabi, just imagine motaliwan, lehualiwan, anali 10 to 14 farms. Baba mbabona, habasa dula maplasing au. Pasileba thobadula mou, bantse ba, 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 bashabani lidu homuze, mtsalohualiu. Haditibulu kidi kai, kahadi kepselo, banikiri kepsel. Haronal mtsalabata sabailungu kibaije, mongate ntsalabate, ekona tarikta kialifahe. So batwawarona, habatwale maplas, how fishama plasin aman? Eh, onama plasin, batwabas, ki bona ba leman, ki bona ba jalang, ki bona ba kotulang, marabakotulela man, ekonomio yahole huali, longu kiplasialo onale. So, habatwale maplas, abana bekezenzentose nunu. Be lungu ribabata maplasionajuali, habafue maplas. Because bona banikile free, har hutefree, bafuman, motali mongaska ona plasi, tsengata, ene iluhura batwana basukul. Zedinsari problemis kranalison, batwama plasin, oshaisi plasimo. Halu huali fishla, lelingli reksenji plas, otibala batubali. Motali zimon 25, resukulali ntsalantose saranlize nunu. Zedinsaba tuba, batwawaplasin, har shoka hala maplasimo, hutu plasi nubani hasia hai, abonolo batela familia hai kai. Baba monajuali, eh, kabakala khalchiha hon, kiyata marilo, chakela mabitla, batwawarona maplasin. Lehuali hane lirbona, hakihakamun, ukikuana atatoto, tamunu toblela hoku, ntsotoba na mama ngashulemuna. Kuri, nakisapota hor, har fumanima plasi, arona hutale back, 1652, basilile, bainkeela, tsona, maplasianunu. Ne kipilala hamonati, ri jalla, ri thola, eh, ntso, chelate, kapaislasi chelate, magakohona hui pidis. Honachi namkota wapuni, wapufu feela, hutola expensive. Batwawarona habakahona hor, badumele watalama plasiya nunu. Ona awa 14, 15, 10. Mo mtia nunu hoo, akampasa lakaplasilungui, zensenani tsa may difuebatu. Communitysima ni ni how fishla communitysing. Ba di homuze 1000, diduti 1 hectare. Those people, badula ndi communitysimo, how emulem nga thole plasi. Ah, khonohori, ah, homuza hai dihule, dibengata, ene, advantejahor motabeli plas. Oh, khonahu ichalla, lidijosa di homuze nunu. Honachi nanadi beyilizi, haro khonu ikeza because we don't own farms. Di beyilizenatamileri di rekirasna chelate, hovani fel harana maplas, anakatlamaplas. Gatala machine, ikeza zadi bey, ikeza zadi josa di homu, gadi sa VKB maniwe, honakidreksa VKB. Unemployment rating ito fukuteha, and one other thing, ito khonahu employer, more people.
Thank you. Thank you, madam.
Good morning. My name is Sophie Matuso Jacobs. I'm a councillor for the ANC. I would like to thank the committee for coming here and then we will support your work. But however, I move that we should get rid of chapter five in the bill. Whites came here and then they took our land. You will find instances where a one white person has got 10 to 14 farms and lot of livestock. This is unacceptable. Our people should get more from the land. We are killing the land, they are working the land. However, the economic benefits doesn't comes to them, it goes to the white minority. I strongly move that we should get back our farms because the white people know how they got this land. The other issue that I want to raise is with regard to eviction. You will find that people were born... You will find that people were born in that particular farm, but all of a sudden they got evicted. This is, that is unacceptable. The other issue that I strongly feel about is in an event of death. In an event of death, you find that people have to be buried on the land. However, such does not happen because the owners who are white refuses us to bury or refuses the farmers to bury their own on that land. On the other hand, we as South Africans or Africans, we are a cultural people. We may find that we want to perform some rituals at the graveside of our lost ones. But we are prohibited to do such by whites. So what I'm asking for is that the land should go back to its rightful owners. The whites know how they got this land. The history of sixteen fifty-two is very clear on that. You know that you did not buy the land. You got it through the barrel of a gun. For instance, now, we buy maize at an expensive price because we don't have land. If we were having land, it would be easy for us. For instance, the people who live in the communities, you may find that they have one thousand cows on one hectare. So that does not work for them. We need this land to be taken back to its rightful owners. And the advantage thereof will be that we will be able to grow our own feed where we will feed these livestock. We will also be able to get bays, machinery, tools. And as a result of this, we will be able to minimize unemployment because we will be working the farms on our own. Thank you very much.
Hamushimane noa araba, yaba bamutu nyapi la, pila musadu ahai. Yamontade, uaba sebeleza masimu. Lehua letlaka koloi, li fikale mo chaise. Li fikale sheba siponi. Amona ugonza pila, uhu tela morau hape uama hata. Habaketa monu, bamusia ali jualu mou. Hobani Batuaboruna, habana maplasi, habana Batuababuella. Re kupa hori, Batuaboruna, li fasili hutela le horu na. Batuaboruna, batibatsiba huitemela. Batibatsiba huisebeleza. Getzibu pila hamnati.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Matidi Somukwena, councillor Matidi Somukwena. I stand to support the bill under the following reasons. Previously, we were taken to a homeland called Kwakwa, it's a mountainous area in the nearby Bethlehem area, where we could not plant anything because it's a mountainous area. Why they took us there, no one knows. White farmers evict farm dwellers who have lived there for many years. They are forever being evicted. There's one old lady who lives on a farm without water, without electricity, without anything. She stays there all alone. They do not take care of her. There's one gentleman who got shot in front of his wife because he raised some consent, some dissatisfaction. So the farm owner shot him. So let the land return to its rightful owners so that blacks can also benefit from this land. Thank you. Thank you to all our speakers. Kilewehe dibuizo, shetsebuling. We are taking all your views. Mayukaruna kaufela aluna renzera ngola fati. We note and also this camera is from the parliament. So we are also recording what you are saying. Rengola di nouzu, renkantwe ngule ngue elingola. Li kemerena halibona chinana kia parlamenteng. So yashahi sa, ira ukaran twe ngule ngue etah etengakwa. So the issue of us writing or sometimes not writing is not a big issue. Jualeta bayahuri, riduti mona kana koumuli, wanare sa nguli. Asiposo akalokalo, banintwe ngule ngue elibu amona, ya record. And also those laptops, they all recording this information that is very crucial that they are saying to us. Libanibadu sinkadi laptopo mani, bantse bangwalan to, engule ngue ebusloka yoli entelebu akwa. This province is the last province that we are visiting. Provinciena kia hotela, uere tlanguyon na. In which we are taking your views and comments. More inkamma ikuto alona, li di twayalot alona. So whatever that you are saying, you are taking it very serious. Inkapa enye uli ibule, renka eli busloka hau. Thank you again. Kilewehe habi. Honored members, we have only one stop tomorrow in Fezile Dabi. And then we are through with our public hearings. Osa, niri districtinya Fezile Dabi, ibe rekratile kamusebe tu ona wa hononyama ikutu. When we go back to parliament. Hau hutela parlamenteng. We will discuss as this committee. Hitobuisana, kelu committee ena. All the views that we have heard from all the nine provinces. Hitobuisana, kama ikutu, kaufela au rea... rea wutu, li ngutwa di provincin, kaufela terobo. The submissions that we received. The submission ito, ri difumaning. Come up with a report. Di reporter kaufela. That will table to parliament. Retladi samani parlamenteng, ulobuakatson. On this very important bill. Kabili ena ebusloka hakanakana. That will ensure transformation of our country. Honeti fata, hori nahayaro na, iba litipeto. Thank you again to all those who presented their views, their political views. Kilewehe bo, shabanitsema ikutu abona, ileba tokabu mon, ileba le... le... muli monguadi politiki. And we also appreciate that you came in this weather. Re, anane la habi, hori, li tillele, hoba tahakanakana. You decided that your voice must be heard. Impalangkatketo yao remantwe aluna, aluke la raunkuhaale. Thank you to the councillors of Disha Bank and the district. Kilewehe ma councillora adishabene li a districti. For coming and joining us. Hori batlemona batlo ba moholi ru. All the political parties. Mechatlo yola yadi politiki. The Bocho Kong, Council of Churches. Li busukung Council of Churches. Traditional healers. Ba, di ngakatastitu. Youth formations. Mechatlo ya bacha. Creative arts. Mechatlo yadi nu nu. And even those that have not mentioned. Liba ukesabu abule lan, kahu... 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 kule. We appreciate all your inputs. Re, anane la, ibile re amohela, ma ikutu ose aluna. Please remember. Kikupaliu pulenxe. That COVID is still with us. Horo COVIDi sansani elite. Take care. Itokomeling. Wash your hands. Sapamatoho. Sanitize. Sanitizing. Wear your mask. Holandi monguana taluna. We also would like our traditional healers to come up with herbs. Re, bata hori, le dingakataro natastitu, diteka ditkari. That will show off us, of this parliament. Zetlangu ritusa, hori rebone, hori re sula juansi wasena. Kialibu ho? Kialebu. Siya bulela. Engosi, ni ambekakule.
The meeting is adjourned.
Kopa no itui lehe.